It is five o'clock. And I call to order the meeting at the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy, Councilmember McEckern.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. This is the time for public comments. And this is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any items listed or not listed on the agenda per Government Code Section 549-54.3. State law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the council, not to the members of the audience. This is a professional business meeting and courtesy and decorum are expected. Please refrain from any debate between audience and speaker, making loud noises, or engaging in any activity which might be disruptive to the decorum of the meeting. May we have closed session items by City Attorney, please?
Would you like to take public comment first, or do you want to do the closed session first? You have a card for public comment.
I do have a card, so I will call up Al Gutierrez. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Al.
Good to you.
You're the only one there, so.
Yeah, very good. Anyway, I'm here about the tapestry thing. And I know you guys think it's just an Asburya problem, but it's not. This is a big, high-desert problem. I've been going to their city council meetings up there. My brother and his wife are going all out to get an injunction for a six months or a year to get this thing stopped. Where are they gonna get their water to drink? We don't have any water. They're not gonna have any medical, they're not gonna have a police department, and they're building their low-cost housing on the freeway by 138. Now, where do you think them people are gonna come up? The low-cost, they're gonna come right up the freeway to Victorville. And you're gonna have to get a lot bigger police department here. And it's not fair to the people who live up here. And I'm really surprised, I told them in Asburya, I said, "Why didn't you get a hold of Victorville and Apple Valley before you guys decided to go ahead with this? This isn't just your problem, this is a high-desert problem." And it's a major problem. Last year, we couldn't even get a hospital bed up here for about six months. Every hospital bed up here was taken up. And now, they're gonna build, they're gonna, no medical at all. I was the first one to get up and talk down there, it was in the paper. And I brought the medical up, I said, "You gotta build a hospital that seats at least a thousand people and bring a hundred more doctors up here if you even start building houses, because there's no sense in having people up here if you ain't getting no medical care." And where are they gonna get the water? They paid the Mojave Water District, paid some guy, I can't remember his name, he owns a big ranch somewhere, I guess he's got a big aquifer under the ranch. They paid him ninety-eight million dollars for water to start that project, and he never delivered it. So, doesn't their wells affect our wells? I know you guys don't have to answer, but there ain't nobody here. I mean, that water's gonna affect our water. And there'll be eighty-two, a hundred thousand people moving in up there. That's a city. They need a police department. They can't, they said they're gonna have a little substation, that's maybe one or two cops. They'll be calling the cops up here all the time, and the cops in Asburya. And that's a long way down, it's gonna take a lot of time from the cops to get down there and come back up here. And they, there's three-
Thirty seconds left, Al.
Huh?
Thirty seconds left.
My three?
You have thirty seconds.
You mean you're gonna do that to me with nobody here? Fuck no more?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds.
I think you people should get involved. And get Apple Valley together, and get it together, and find out what's going on, and how bad it's gonna affect this city. The City Council's made a big mistake several years ago when they allowed all these people to move up here. And it was, there was no doctors, no nothing, that was terrible. And, and, don't do it again, you know? Get together with Asburya. Although, they don't listen to anybody, anyway, they think, you know, there's three endangered species on that property. I don't know how they got permission to build. Go ahead and look at her, she told me to get out of here, but there's nobody here, I'm the only one who cares about this.
Thank you.
Hopefully, you people will now, after this. But it's gonna have a big effect on this city right here. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else that wants to speak now or address the council, so can we have a closed session items by City Attorney, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have eight items this evening, there's one addendum item. Items A and C are related, they are existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D1, one for the Airport Authority, one for the City Council. Case number is set forth on the agenda, it's the SEC versus City of Victorville. Item B is on behalf of the Airport Authority, real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. Negotiating parties are Mr. Metzler and Mr. Brian Parnell on behalf of Sterling, and the parcel numbers are set forth on the agenda. Item D is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D2. It pertains to one case on behalf of the City Council. Items E and F are also anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D4. Each one of those also pertains to one potential case. The addendum item is also anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D2. And lastly, item G is Victorville Housing Trust, closed session, and its real estate negotiations pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. The parties are Mr. Metzler on behalf of the city, and the Victor Elementary School District, and the property's location is set forth on the agenda. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session, or at the commencement of the regular meeting at six o'clock.
Thank you. We will not recess to closed session, and a regular session will convene at 6:00 P.M. It is 6:03. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember McEckern.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. May we have closed session announcement by City Attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had seven items set forth on the regular agenda, and one addendum item. Items A and C are related, they are existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D1, it's the SEC versus City of Victorville, one for the Airport Authority, item C for the City Council. We had item B, which is real estate, real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. The property location is set forth on the agenda, negotiating parties are Mr. Metzler and Brian Parnell on behalf of Sterling Development. Item D is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D2, one potential case. Items E and F also were anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D4. Again, each one of those had, pertained to one particular case. Item G was real estate negotiations for the Victorville Housing Trust. The property is set forth on the agenda item, the negotiating parties were the Victor Elementary School District and Mr. Metzler on behalf of the city. And lastly, the addendum item was for the City Council, and it was anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D2. Unfortunately, we did not conclude the closed session items, so we will be reconvening. We don't anticipate at this point there to be any reportable action, but to the extent there is, we will report it at the conclusion of the continued closed session.
Thank you. At this time, let's see, we have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be delivered by Brother Gabriel Monarch with Saint John of God, Apple Valley. And the pledge of allegiance will be led by Police Chief San Lucia. Please stand.
God of all creation, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. You are indeed worthy of praise. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all of our blessings. Thank you for every gift that we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather together this evening. We ask for your hand of blessing on this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and our goals this day. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a presentation this evening, and I'll come down and do the presentation. Would Principal Valerie Hatcher please approach the dais, please? Good evening.
Are you?
On behalf of the Victorville City Council, I would like to present you with this proclamation in celebration of University Preparatory Schools' 2015 Gold Medal School Award. University Preparatory School was ranked number fifty out of nine-hundred-and-three. California schools are number two-eighty-four nationally by U.S. News and World Report. Congratulations.
Yes, Mayor Garcia. The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or on any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 549-54.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the City Council, and there are two minor revisions to tonight's agenda. The first one is on consent calendar item C-18. The not-to-exceed amount in the agenda item is being corrected from four million, four-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-nine-hundred dollars to four million, two-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-two-hundred dollars. The second one is on written communications, item D-8. A correction of the additional appropriation from ten thousand dollars to twenty-one thousand dollars. And those are all the revisions I have, Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. We do not have any appeal hearings this evening, so we will move on to public hearings. The first item, B1, is a continuation of public hearing to the October 6, 2015, regular City Council meeting. Consideration of ordinance number 2343 entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville, Adding a New Chapter 13.65 to the Title 13 of the Victorville Municipal Code Relating to Stormwater and Urban Runoff Management and Discharge Control." I open the public hearing at this time, and I don't have any cards of anyone that wants to speak on this particular item. Therefore, I will close the-
No, do not close, just continue, please.
This one continue, I'm sorry, this one continues to the October 6, 2015 meeting.
Correct, the public hearing stays open until that time.
And I think for the record, this has been continued since August 18. Continued public hearing to be continued again?
That's correct.
Yes, okay.
So, this item will be continued to, to the October 6, 2015 meeting. Item B2, consideration of ordinance number 2345, small residential rooftop solar systems. I open the hearing at this time. I don't have any cards on this particular item. Therefore, I will close the, the public hearing. And are there any comments or questions by council?
Mayor Garcia, I do need to read the title of the ordinance before the council takes a vote.
I'm sorry, yes, go ahead, please.
Ordinance number 2345, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville, Adding a New Section to Title 16 of the Municipal Code Relating to Expedited Permitting Procedures for Small Residential Rooftop Solar Systems with an Environmental Exemption."
Their motion for approval would include wafer the reading?
And I would wafer the reading.
There a motion?
Yes, there is. Is there a second? Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox, to wafer the reading of the ordinance and introduce it. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item B3, consideration of resolution number 15-062 entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, Finding and Declaring That the Public Convenience and Necessity Justify and Require the Granting of a Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity to Crystal Garden." I open the public hearing, and I do not have any cards on this item either. Therefore, I will close the public hearing. And are there any questions or comments by council?
For approval.
I need to have-
No, the resolution does not even-
It's a resolution.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy to adopt the resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item B4, notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the Spring Valley Parkway Repaving Project. I open the public hearing. I do not have any cards on this item. I close the public hearing, and any comments from council members?
Just that I've been working on this since I was elected in 2008, it's finally time that this is forward, so I will move for approval.
Right up there with the Ms. Wally interchange.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to consent calendar. With one motion, we can actually approve items C1 through C19, unless there is an item that needs to be discussed or pull for further discussion.
I went through all of these items, I had some questions, I directed them to the city manager, Mr. Doug Robertson, he answered those efficiently, and so I have no further questions on that consent calendar.
Anyone else have any-
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to written communications. And item D1, congressional update by Congressman Cook's representative. And there's no recommendation.
My name is Wally Lynn, I think most of you know that, I'm representative for our Congressman Paul Cook. I want to thank you, first of all, Mayor Garcia, and the council and staff for giving us a few minutes to give you a brief update as to what our Congressman Cook is doing in Washington, DC. These reports, we hope to present biannually, or at least, or possibly quarterly, depending on how things are working out, what kind of activities we have going on in Congress. As a Marine myself, I'm always very honored to represent a retired Marine Corps Colonel with two Purple Hearts. A guy that loves this country, a guy that has great passion for our military and our The first slide. Most people don't realize the size of the 8th Congressional District. This Congressional District is the largest in the, in the United States. Covers a tremendous territory, so it keeps us busy covering from top to bottom, as you can see on that, on that screen. First item is to be discussed is the legislation introduced. HR 2286, prioritizing urgent claims for veterans, Veterans Act prioritizes VA disability claims for those who are over seventy years old, terminally ill, or have life-threatening illnesses. Currently, the Subcommittee on Disability Assistance and Memorial Affairs, and I think I have the wrong slide up here, let's see. Get things out of order here, just a moment. HR 2286, prioritizing urgent claims for veterans. So, again, that's prioritizing VA disability claims for those who are over seventy, as I mentioned to you. And now, we'll go on to the next, next slide. Legislation introduced, HR 3025, Wildfire Aerospace Protection Act 2015, creates fines and a maximum of five-year prison sentence for anyone who operates a drone over a wildfire on federal land and interferes with the firefighting operations. Currently in the Subcommittee on Crime, Terrorism, Homeland Security, and Investigations. HR 3025, Wildfire Aerospace Protection. My bill will institute a criminal penalty for anyone who launches a drone that interferes with fighting wildfires and federal property. And that is Congressman Cook's efforts in that regard, you've all heard recent situations involving these drones, and how difficult and how dangerous they can become. Legislation introduced, again, HR 3176, Protecting Our National Parks Act 2015, creates fines and a prison sentence for anyone who vandalizes a national park. Currently in the House Judiciary Committee. This, this bill is a slap on the wrist, or a, a fine doesn't, doesn't fit the crime of intentionally running our, ruining our historic treasures. It's time that we make a statement that our parklands are not a canvas for vandals or to destroy. Signed again, Paul Cook. HR 3286, Hire Veterans Act, creates an awards program to promote private sector recruiting, hiring, and retaining veterans. Currently in the House Veterans Affairs Committee. Hire Vats Act 2015, encouraging and recognizing employers who make veterans a priority. Again, major legislation. Iran can never be allowed to get a nuclear weapon, not today, not ten years from now, not in a century. That's Paul Cook's feelings on that Iran issue. Congressman Cook is opposed, vehemently opposed to the Iran deal. This is a bad deal that hurts our national security and that are critical allies. There is expected to be a vote by Congress on whether or not to approve this deal by The National Defense Authorization Act, NDAA, has passed both the House and the Senate. It's, it will head to the conference when Congress gets back in session. The transportation funding package is a three-month extension of the Highway Trust Fund that has been signed already into law. When, when Congress reconvenes, they will be looking for a longer-term solution to funding this trust fund. This is a picture you may recognize. Just last Saturday, we had our big, our, our, our big Women of Distinction function over in Apple Valley, and it was well-attended. We honored some twenty-some candidates who were, who have served a, provided a public service for all of us to enjoy up here in the high desert. So, it was a great event, and one of our featured speakers was Mayor Garcia, and we thank you for that. The next picture shows the entire group that was honored, and they all had some interesting comments, many of them did. So, it was a great event, don't you agree, Mayor?
Yes, I do, very much so. Beautiful comments.
Great. As I said, these reports are gonna be brief, but if you have questions, detail, detailed questions, further information you want about any of these things that are going through Congress, or if you have any questions, I know we get a lot of questions from veterans, and I don't think there's a member of Congress doing more for veterans than our own Congressman Paul Cook. So, here's the number, it's 760-247-1815. Anytime you have questions, will you give us a call? I thank you for your, your opportunity to give you an update, and we'll be back soon. Okay?
Thank you, we appreciate it very much. Thank you. Now we move on to written communications, item D2. Purchase Authorization for Furnish and Deliver Payment Crack Seal. Madam Clerk, can you read the recommendation, please?
The recommendation is that the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve the purchase of payment crack seal material from Craft Co., Inc. in the amount of $31,231.07 in support of Southern California Logistics Airport Airfield Pavement Maintenance.
Tomo.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D3. Denert Sublease Agreement for Hangar 682, Pacific Aerospace Resources and Technologies. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve the standard sublease agreement by and between Pacific Aerospace Resources and Technologies Part and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority.
Senator Mayor, if I could ask a question of our attorney. Can we take D3, D4, and D5 together? They're all related.
Certainly you can, as long as it's clear that we are approving the hangars by hangar number, the leases by hangar number.
All right, then I would like to move for approval of items D3 with respect to Hangar 682, D4, Hangar 683, and D5, Hangar 676, with Pacific Aerospace Resources and Technologies.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item D6. Proposed Contract Amendment, Ontario Refrigeration Service, Inc. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council approve Amendment Number 4 to the Ontario Refrigeration Service, Inc. Agreement and to the reallocation of Facilities Division budgeted funds to cover anticipated maintenance costs through December 31, 2015.
Mayor, I have a question on this one. Is this the air conditioning system that we put in City Hall and the police station? The one that works on some sort of an ice system? That while it might work in Orange County, it was never designed to work in the desert, and it's been pretty much a total bust and a failure?
I wouldn't say total bust, but pretty close to that, yes.
Pretty close.
That's one of the problems. Their failures have contributed to taxing the rest of the system as well. Christian, you want to add some color to that?
Yeah, I can add all sorts of color to that, actually. Most of it blue.
My question is really, why aren't we just replacing them?
We are, and that's where we've come to. We've tried to fix them. Our costs have gone up significantly just in the last two months, literally within a couple of weeks of the new fiscal year. We've had several of them just out and out fail. We're trying to do our best to get through this period. We're going to also, with some other additional changes in state law, we're probably going to have to go to a prevailing wage also. And so we're asking this to be done right now in order to fix the systems, bring the problems current, and then probably going to have to rebid this contract as well here in the not-too-distant future.
And just so the public knows, the council probably sits in the most uncomfortable room in City Hall thanks to the air conditioning system we have here.
That is correct. That one has completely failed at this point.
And this one came online by the people who built the clubhouse, if I have my history correct. Was it sort of all tied together?
No, not necessarily, but it is the same provider of systems. The new ones on the clubhouse are actually a hybrid system that operate in combination with a standard HVAC unit. The one here in City Hall that's on the north end, it actually is a standalone system, one of their first, designed to work at a lot lower operating ambient temperatures. And so it just simply can't keep up, nor can it keep the discharge of cold air up for a period of time relative to a standard workday.
Somewhere in our future, there is comfort, right?
Somewhere in our future, there's comfort. Yeah, we're looking at two options. One would be to replace it with a package unit so that we get back to the same system we have now, but we're also exploring changing the vent system in the roof of City Hall. But we need to see if our current chiller could handle the added area that that would have.
Okay, that's all I had. I couldn't let it pass.
Any other questions?
Questions?
I have a question in regard to the prevailing wage. It indicates this further increase maintenance cost by 20% because of the requirement to pay prevailing wage. I would think that kind of a business would pay more than the prevailing wage requirements, but... Are we sure? Did you look at the documents? Are you sure that's not an excuse to this public agency to pay 20% more? Have you seen their payroll records? Did they prove to you that we should increase this 20% because of their need to pay prevailing wage?
They don't want to pay the prevailing wage, actually. Our purchasing department has determined through, I believe it's Senate Bill 854, which is recently approved by the state of California, that maintenance and service contracts over, I believe, a minimum amount of $3,000 per year have to be paid in prevailing wage, even for charter cities.
This doesn't actually change the current contractors' contract. We will need to rebid this under prevailing wage now.
Okay. Well, there's a sentence, I'm reading it. This will further increase maintenance contract cost by approximately 20%.
And the reason for that, sir, is because-
About that.
Sorry. We typically use 20% as a general rule when differentials, looking at differentials on labor rates.
Okay.
That's why.
I know you'll look into it.
Yes, sir.
I'm confident, I just don't believe the statement. Not without some justification.
And that's just an information statement in the agenda item for the future prevailing wage rate that we are anticipating we'll have to pay as a result of that new state law.
Okay.
Thank you.
There a motion on this item?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D7. Contract Award for Wildlife Hazard Assessment, LSA Associates, Inc. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve the award of a Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreement to LSA Associates, Inc. for Wildlife Hazard Assessment, project number ES15-044, in the amount of $114,279.
What are the wildlife hazards at the base case? Is that birds mostly?
That's, in fact, what this assessment is going to attempt to do is identify, are there any wildlife biological concerns out there? Birds could be the most likely. So certainly, this assessment will also not only identify birds, but at what types of, what times during the year they're actually flying through. They'll actually compare that also to the operations of the airport to see if there's a legitimate concern to flight operations. And if there's believed to be a big enough issue, they'll actually recommend and will be required as an airport to actually implement a wildlife hazardous management plan, which we would have to act upon to mitigate any biological wildlife concerns that could impact flight.
Do we get critters that wander around in the airstrip? I mean, tortoises or things like that?
I'm not aware of tortoises. Perhaps in the past, we certainly haven't had any reports of that over the recent years. Birds, you know, are the most common. If we have any official reports, there are an occasional bird strike, and every time there is one of those, we do have to report those up through the FAA. Those are the most common.
Questions?
I will move approval of this assessment. I'm afraid they're going to find a new strain of hummingbird or something.
I'll second.
Hummingbird probably wouldn't bring down a plane.
Pardon?
A hummingbird probably wouldn't bring down a plane.
No, but, you know, there'll be a reason to have three of the studies if there's a new strain of anything. I'm glad it doesn't include plant, a new strain of tumbleweed taking place.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D8, Contract Change Order, Baldi Brothers. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve Contract Change Order Number 2 to Runway 321 Reconstruction Project Agreement with Baldi Brothers, Inc., project number CC14-007, in the amount of $1,047,695.09. Authorize the city manager to execute Contract Change Order Number 2 and approve an additional appropriation of $21,000 to the grant matching budget.
Move for approval.
Question? This is a real unusual change order, million-dollar change order. And I read the backup materials, and it's obviously an efficient way to do this. Are we doing it right? Maybe I should ask the city attorney?
The fact that it's being brought to the city council, that you would have to approve a change order of this magnitude certainly, and this apparently has OEA, which is one of the granting entities, and FAA consent to this transaction, so...
To summarize perhaps what's being done here, and it is a little bit unconventional to the typical process, and yeah, the number is perhaps alarming in comparison to the entire scope of the project. But effectively, what we are doing here is we're taking advantage of a contract that was bid for the rehab of Runway 321. We're nearing the completion of that. In fact, we're probably largely in the curing phase right now of the latter segments of that project. But with that, it's largely all concrete flatwork. In fact, it's replacing old sections of runway and replacing it with 24-inch sections of new runway. And we have had a grant award actually sitting for quite some time, quite a few years. And the grant that we were awarded from the OEA administered through the EDA was designed to be used for ramp. And what we've been trying to do is use those monies for the most prioritized areas of the airfield. And what our biggest challenge has been is with the expansions and contractions of the airfield infrastructure out there. It seems like every day, there's a different flatwork priority out there. So what we've actually done here is identified a very critical need with a rehab to a very important, critical section of taxiway echo that connects with your main ramp. And with that, it's identically-natured work in comparison to what we actually bid on the 321. So we've been working very hard to first get the approval, just in the scope change, to allow the grant to be substituted for this type of work. And now that we've gotten that approval from the OEA and more particularly the EDA, which is the Economic Development Administration, we now are trying to take advantage of the fact that we still have the contractor on site, which is what's effectively necessitating this transaction to proceed in a change order-type fashion. Alternatively, we would, in a normal world, we would go out through the long, lengthy bid process, go through the award of contract. In this particular case, we would most definitely lose the grant. So it's certainly a meeting of the best opportunity for both worlds, not losing the grant.
And the contractor we're now using went through the bid process, was selected-
Yes.
Selected as a result of the bid.
Yes, they went through a city bid process, correct.
There's a motion by Mr. McEckern and second by Mr. Cox, I believe?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D9, Biannual Financial Report, Final Fiscal Year 2015. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation, please.
The recommendation is that the City Council approve the biannual financial report for the third and fourth quarters of fiscal year 2015.
Questions?
Yeah, Doug, the summary on page 2 says that the actual spending in the general fund was $53,303,000 compared to $52,903,000 budgeted. And revenues are $51,202,000 compared to $51,505,000. That looks, I'm doing my arithmetic in my head, it looks like about a $2.1 million deficit in the general fund, is that?
I haven't done those numbers in my head, but that sounds pretty close, yeah.
And our budgeted deficit was about 1.3, 1.4.
Yeah, we planned on using reserves for a portion of that, yes.
And almost all that, well, a large part of that excess spending is in your department, admin general.
It's also your department, for the record.
It's our department.
It's really the attorney's department. That is almost entirely due to SEC litigation costs that were higher than anticipated.
SEC litigation.
Yeah, same is true actually with the airport as well. You'll see an overage there, and same thing where the SEC defense costs reside. Those keep coming in every month.
And that's a lawsuit where the citizens of the United States are suing the citizens of Victorville.
That is exactly correct, yes.
Suing ourselves. Question, Doug. Obviously, in the past, as these quarterly reports have come up, they've been put on consent there as part of written communications tonight. I know we're in the next item, and we're going to get into the Open Gov demonstration part, but is that a part of why we're doing this tonight, or...?
You know, the last couple of times, actually, Councilman Kennedy has pulled it off to talk about a couple of items of interest. So since that was happening on a regular basis, we thought we'd just put it on written to make it easier to do that, so...
Okay, and then the other thing, and I think to Councilmember Kennedy's point, is we generally spend way more in the first half of the year than we ever take in, and we catch up in the second half of the year as property taxes come in, sales taxes.
Typically what happens, and these are unaudited numbers. There are still some property taxes, as well as some sales tax adjustments, that will likely come in that will be credited to this same fiscal year. So these are unaudited. When you get the audit, you know, early next year, all those corrections will be in there, and all the end-of-year closeout will be completed by then.
And this is only the general fund? I mean, we have, there's a lot of other money the city's involved with.
That's correct.
Probably another 150, 160 million?
That's correct. Of other activities. Yeah, the detail is on page 2 as the general fund. We have some of the selected other funds listed on, I guess, I think it's page 4.
Thank you.
I had the one question. The enterprise fund, page 4, why was expenditure in solid waste more than the income since it's a franchise operation and contracted? I know you were going to look into it, but don't need the answer tonight, but I'm just curious.
Get a final answer. Staff's still researching on that, too.
I'll go ahead and move approval of the biannual financial report.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And Doug, I have to say, I do believe this belongs as an item for discussion as opposed to just blowing through the consent calendar.
They agree.
Item D10, Staff Demonstration at the New Open Gov Financial Transparency Tool. Madam Clerk, just read the recommendation.
Yes, there is no recommendation on this item. It's information only.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to reintroduce you to Janelle Davidson. I know most of you know her. She mostly does work on the city's municipal utilities, but she also heads up a team that we formed called the Internal Consulting Team, made up of staff members of a variety of departments that get together and assist the city in improving our processes. We're proud of the fact that as of yesterday, we are the first city in the high desert to offer this level of transparency. And just to kind of run you through relatively quickly the Open Gov site and the types of data that's available to any member of the public, you can go online right now and access any of this. Janelle is going to walk you through. This is a live demonstration. This is not a PowerPoint presentation, so if you have questions, please ask. This is a live demonstration. This is not a PowerPoint presentation, so if you have questions, please ask them. If you have a curiosity about a certain revenue or expenditure, it might be fun to challenge her a little bit and see how she gets there. She's certainly our expert on this and will be for the future. Janelle, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. I'm very excited to give you a brief demonstration of our Open Gov tool, which is our first open data project for the city. I hope we have many more to come. This one happens to be in the form of a financial transparency tool. And it is accessible directly at victorville.ca openedgov.com, or you can also access it through the city's website. This is the city's homepage. You'll see there's a quick link for financial transparency. If you click on that link, it will take you to our landing page for the tool. This gives you some basic information about Open Gov. It also provides the how-to information that I'll be covering this evening, as well as provides some links to quick views within the tool and some frequently asked questions. I'll go ahead and get started right here in the Open Gov application. Basically, what Open Gov does is it synthesizes our revenue and expense data based on the city's chart of accounts. This is the default view that you will see each time that you log into the tool. It is a stacked graph...I'm sorry, a stacked line graph format, and it's showing the citywide expenses filtered by function. You can see along the bottom here, we have data available from fiscal year 2012. That's actual data, all the way through fiscal year 2014. For fiscal year 2015, we're showing the budget data, which is the lighter colored column there. And we also have unaudited actual data available, and followed by budget data for fiscal year 2016. This data is updated monthly at this point, just the budget data and the unaudited actuals. You'll notice that the default view starts out on this Views tab, but I'm going to skip over that for just a moment and walk through some of the filters that are available so that users can actually filter down to the data that's of most interest to them. You'll see here we have the show box. This allows you to select either expenses, revenues, or both. Next, you have the broken down by filter, which allows you to select a category to organize the data within your chart. And this is followed by four filter options. And because it's a little bit difficult to see, I'm only going to open up one just to show you an example. This is the fund filter. And you can actually drill down and look for any fund that you'd like manually, and you can select which ones you want included in your chart, or you can unselect them. You can also go ahead and go to the top and search by a keyword if you have something in particular in mind. And then way down here at the bottom, you'll notice there is a fiscal year slider. So this allows you to modify the view of the chart to limit the number of fiscal years visible. Up here on the right, we have five options for the visual representation itself. The default view is that stacked line graph, but you also have a stacked percentage graph, a normal line graph, a pie chart, which looks very small in this view, but this will adjust based on the resolution on your screen. And then we have a bar chart. Down below there, you will see a legend that is giving you a list of everything included in the view. If you hover over an item in the legend, it will go ahead and populate the data tags to give you some information about this data. It's giving you the total amount of the expenses or revenues you have in the view, the percentage of the total for that data set, the percent change compared to the previous data set, and then the total within the data set. You have a couple of options available to you to drill down further into the data. You can click on the legend itself, or you can click on the chart itself. And I'm just going to walk through one quick example here. One of the favorite topics is public safety, so we'll take a look at that one. And you can click on public safety, and that's where you'll find what you would expect to see under public safety. You have the police and the fire contracts. But I'd like to go back one level, and you'll notice we also have engineering and community services showing here. This is because it's based on our chart of accounts, so that's how these account codes were established. But the interesting thing about this tool is that you can actually drill down further, so you can explore why this is included in public safety. So for community services, if you click on that item, you can see on the title up here that this is actually animal control. And they have a low-cost spay and neuter program. And then they have this section with no program specified. That represents the division's operating expenses. And in this view, this is the most detail that you can get. But you can come over here to the broken down by section and change that to expense type. And this will show you how that is broken down by personnel, operations, and maintenance, and capital. If you click on operations and maintenance, this will take you all the way down to the line item level. And this is the lowest level of detail that you can get to within this tool. Now I'm going to go back to that saved view section that I skipped over. This is a very important key feature because it allows us to go ahead and preformat views for commonly asked questions. So we have a few examples set up here that I'm going to walk through. The first one is how does the current budget compare to last fiscal year? When you click on that question, it automatically takes you, so you can evaluate this data automatically. Next, we have what are our revenue sources...what revenue sources contribute to the city's general fund? This is in the pie chart format. This one is how much does the city spend on police and fire services? And the last example that I'll show you here is how much does the city spend on personnel each year? And one of the options that you have, even though this is a saved view, you can still come in and go back to the filter section. This is the citywide personnel expenses. But if we just wanted to look at general fund personnel expenses, we could come in here to the filter for funds. We could find the general fund. The chart will automatically update, and those are your general fund expenses for personnel. You can see another feature that we have here is the ability to add notes to point out data anomalies or just something out of the ordinary that you might want to highlight for the public. Here, there's only one note in here currently, just to give you an example. It'll go ahead and it'll give you a flag where that note applies. So the user can expand the box and read a little bit more information about why they're seeing what they're seeing. So as we get some feedback from our users, we can go ahead and start adding in more of these notes so that'll help the public understand a little bit better. Lastly, up here in the right-hand corner, I just want to show you that we have some additional features. You can share any view by clicking on the share button here. And if you click on email, it'll actually populate the link to this view in your email message. You can also share it on Twitter, Google Plus, Facebook. You have the ability to download the image or the table, or also a spreadsheet if you want to export the data. And under the help menu, you have a few tools here, additional how-to information. There's a welcome screen that will pop up the first time someone visits our site. We have a multi-fund accounting 101, which might be useful for those not familiar with fund accounting. And lastly, there is a way for the public to contact us if they have any questions or want to inquire further about the data that they're seeing before them. And that's pretty much the entire demonstration. I'm happy to address any questions that you may have. I also wanted to point out that this is just one module available. We are looking at what is called a budget milestone module that will help with perhaps some of those reports that come to the council, mid-year budget discussions, annual budget discussions. So we can also look at current year expenses in a different module. We can look at the balance sheet or transaction reports if we want to go down to that level. Very well.
Wow. This is...this is quite amazing. I think, you know, when we go back a few years and asking for the quarterly financial report, this is that on steroids. A couple of things that I would like to ask, though. I noticed that in this view that you're showing right now, the enterprise functions seem to overwhelm the chart. And that might give a false impression of, you know, what the general fund is actually doing or what the city's actually doing. Perhaps there might be a way to separate enterprise functions from the rest of the charts. Not to...not from the standpoint of we don't need to show that, but it seems to indicate that we spend way more money on enterprise functions than we do in public safety, and that's just not the facts. That's not true. We all know that. We spend way more on public safety. Janelle, I'm going to test you right now. I'm going to do something that most people out there want to know, are constantly asking us because they think we just make so much money up here on the dais. Can you show me what the city council makes on the fly?
That's a good one.
I will give it my best shot.
Before you do that, Janelle, there was one thing I wanted you to show because we do have an accountant on that end of the dais. Can you scroll down? Just scroll down on that screen right there.
Oh, there you go. That's what you wanted to see.
And below the charts, are there real numbers that you can see?
Ryan's statement, I mean, I understand his message, but his statement really isn't right. We spend a lot more money operating the water district and the sewer plant and, you know,
airport and B M S.
Those kind of things that we do than we spend on public safety. We just do. But they generate revenues as well.
And those monies can't be spent on public safety, so, okay.
Thank you, Doug. Yes, city council. So let's see.
Why she's bringing that up, please.
Doug, I'd like...I'd like to know if you've added enough staff to handle all of Dorothy Miller's phone calls that you're going to start getting.
Dorothy and I talk on a regular basis. We met just the other day, so.
This is going to generate...I'm hopeful that it'll generate some interest in the public. It will certainly create some confusion for some people, and so...Bill, are you going to handle all those calls, or?
As of right now...
Pat Rosenberg's going to do it.
If you ask a question on here, it would go to Janelle.
Okay.
If you ask through the system, so. Honestly, I hope that it generates a lot of questions.
I hope so, too.
That's the point, is to get the public, you know, access to the information. They've had access to this information. If they knew how to request it, we would do a public records request, and it would be very time-consuming. I would love for the public to get in there and explore. I love this stuff, too, because I'm a budget wonk. I mean, that's what I've done my whole career, is work on budgets. So it's very interesting to me, kind of flipping through the filters and seeing exactly what all is in there.
And Ryan's point, valid point, we focus on a general fund. That's about fifty million dollars. That's the stuff we have discretion over. That's police, fire, public safety, public works, that kind of thing.
Correct.
But all these other activities are a huge part of what the city does. And if you start separating them or pulling them apart, you lose the visual impact of how big and complicated this city is.
Right. One thing we could do, perhaps, because the default view does give this list of questions, we could perhaps make the general fund view the first item on here, so it's right there in your face if you want.
And I like that. Completely, one-hundred percent. What Councilmember Kennedy said, we spend way more, but we bring in a lot of revenue on the enterprise funds. It just...sometimes that can get confusing to people, and it looks like we're spending so much on water district stuff, S C L A stuff. And the reality is, is what's spent there, what comes in there, is all obligated in those areas. We literally have no discretion over that. So I think if somehow we could show all that in one thing, but also the ability to separate the two. But this is amazing. I compliment staff. I think if you're looking at additional modules to make it even more transparent or provide additional information, all the better. And I don't know about you, but I'd just like to have this for my own business.
I don't need it for mine. Mine's not nearly that complicated. And I do think graphs are visually easier for people to see than a page full of numbers. I mean, I'm used to a page full of numbers, and glorious, but this, I think, is going to be easier for people.
The important thing I wanted to note was that for every graph that you saw, every chart that you saw, below it, if you just scroll down, is the actual number. If you highlight over one of those sections, those numbers will pop up, so you don't have to scroll down. But it's all there. And this is not data that's been manipulated in any way. It's essentially our general ledger uploaded. It's a...well, speaking for Janelle, it's a relatively simple process.
Have you checked the numbers? Are you sure they're right?
Everything we've checked is right because we literally get a data download from finance, and then we simply upload it into the module. We don't tweak it in any way whatsoever, except where there are, you know... One of the things that you may have noticed was when she went directly to animal control. On the right-hand side, it said something to the effect of no program specified. Well, that's because it's just sort of a general category. It doesn't sound very good, so we may do something to go in there and tweak the words as to how it's described. But we haven't touched any of the numbers. It's literally straight from our financial system.
One last comment. I just wish Sean McGlade was here to see this. It'd be so appropriate for him to...
So, Janelle, you want to talk about, quickly, our city council personnel numbers?
Oh, yes. So I did go ahead and basically the same process that I followed in the previous example. We don't have a saved view for this one, so I did go ahead and just use the filters. And you just...it's very intuitive. You just drill down. So if you start with the city function, you just...in this case, I can go back here, walk you through.
Janelle, did you do all the...what, the integration of all this stuff, the software and the...
What we did was we worked with Open Gov. We provided them with our chart of accounts, and they go ahead and they set up the framework. And then we go ahead and do the data exports from our financial system and upload them and verify them.
Janelle, how much have we spent with Open Gov just to get the project to this point?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand dollars.
Eight thousand. Did you say eight thousand?
Yeah, to get it to this point, it cost us eight thousand dollars in contract work from Open Gov. There's been some staff time involved. I wouldn't say it's a huge amount of staff time. But this is...was something that when we saw this option, we knew, you know, this was the best way to get the information out as quickly as possible.
Doug, just a question with respect to the audit and auditors. I mean, if our system feeds into Open Gov and it's reliable, I mean, wouldn't it be reliable to the auditors, too? I mean, couldn't they rely on these numbers, what they see online, as much as they could rely on looking at our own printed-out numbers that we give them or whatever?
They could, but they wouldn't.
Well, I get that, but I mean, the reality is, the numbers are the same
That's correct.
here as they are in our own system, so.
That is correct. Well, a lot of their work is not so much looking at the sort of higher-level numbers and account balances and totals. It's actually going in and testing transactions to make sure they were handled in an appropriate way. Testing systems to make sure that the security is robust enough, that sort of thing.
And one thing to point out, this, because it is a budget module, it's based on the budgetary figures. So what is not included in here are your non-budgetary items, like depreciation, prior year adjustments, things like that. If we move forward and we develop those other modules, we will have to open that up and incorporate all of that data as well.
The only thing that if you're not paying careful attention, that you'd be fooled by is that you've got actual, 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 you're watching these trends and these lines, and then oops, in the middle is budget, current year budget. That's not actual spending, and that doesn't represent a spending trend. That's a budget number. Current year budget. That's not actual spending, and that doesn't represent a spending trend. That's a budget number. I don't know if, well, I, let's, let's wait and see if it causes a problem. If it doesn't cause a problem, it's fine the way it is.
Yeah. Hopefully, they'll notice that it's a little bit lighter shade and, and wonder why. You know, we do have a couple of those pages that Janelle kind of breezed by, sort of the how-to and the accounting 101 stuff, that hopefully will answer some of those questions as well as with the fund accounting. But, you know, if, if someone calls and asks why, it, it'll make my day, because someone's actually using it and looking and, and interested in how we spend our money. Thank you, Janelle. Oh, I don't know if you noticed that, but if you are in here looking around and you get, sometimes when I've done it, I've kind of gotten buried too deep into, you know, some category or something or other. If you hit the reset button, it takes you right back to this view. You can also hit the back button, just like a browser, and get back, you know, step by step. But if you ever want to get back to where you started, just hit the reset button.
And Doug, as a function of looking at past years, it goes back to what year?
Eleven twelve.
Okay. No action required on that. No action.
A big hooray.
Yeah, thank you.
Information.
Kudos.
Janelle, thank you.
Good job. Thank you very much.
Okay, now we move on to item D11. Bike lanes preliminary engineering agreement, David Evans and Associates. And Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the city council approve the consultant professional services provider agreement with David Evans and Associates for bike lanes preliminary engineering in the amount not to exceed thirty-four thousand, three hundred dollars, and authorize the city attorney to approve non-substantive revisions to the agreement.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D12. Measure I five-year capital improvement plan. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the city council adopt the Measure I five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2015, 2016 through 2019, 2020, as set forth in resolution number fifteen dash oh five-three. Authorize staff to pay Sandbag one million dollars from road service development impact fee fund number three fifty-two, and appropriate an additional expense of one million dollars, resulting in one million dollars of revenue in Measure I. Add La Mesa Road from El Rio Road to Cantina Road, including pavement rehabilitation, and adding bike lanes to the fiscal year 2015, 2016 capital improvement program budget, and appropriate the following amounts in the fiscal year 2015, 2016 budget to the La Mesa Road project. One point six million from Measure I, fund number two fifty, and four hundred thousand dollars from the local transportation fund, fund number two thirty.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy.
Can we just have one, one quick discussion here, Doug? Just to make sure I understand this. We're giving, we're paying Sandbag a million dollars out of diff against our obligation on the Miskolet interchange, and that will in turn free up road fund revenues for us.
Yes. So, the way it works is.
Get it back.
We get it back. It's the same million dollars. We pay them out of the road diff, and then within thirty days, they pay us the Measure I, because the Measure I was borrowed to build the La Mesa-Miskolet interchange. It was technically and legally, it has to come from road service diff funds. So as those funds come in on an annual basis, we send them to Sandbag, and they send them back as Measure I. Same monies. They don't take any administrative fees out of it at all. This was essentially some excess dollars that would, that will bring the projects, all of the projects forward a year. If you recall, when we talked about this a couple of months ago, and you prioritized four major projects, Bear Valley Road being the first one, La Mesa Road being the second one, we thought that we would be building, rebuilding Bear Valley Road late this fiscal year, and then La Mesa Road late probably the next fiscal year, followed by, I think it was the silica to, to industrial piece, and then finally Amethyst Road. By repaying some of this money a little bit early, we'll actually be completing the Bear Valley Road sooner, which moves the La Mesa Road into this current fiscal year, which is why we have to make these adjustments.
We don't have a need for that million dollars in the diff fund.
No, actually, its main purpose was to pay for the interchange. We didn't have it when the interchange was being built, so we borrowed the Measure I.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D13. Award of contract, Apple Valley Construction. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the city council appropriate additional two hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars from fund number four twenty-five, the sewer fund. Award a contract to Apple Valley Construction in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars, forty-one cents for the sewer at Tenth and D Street.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D14. Voluntary compliance agreement, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the city council approve and authorize the execution of the voluntary compliance agreement between the City of Victorville and the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
May I go see if I might? There's one very slight correction in the staff report. It indicated in the staff report that we'd have a hundred and twenty days to obtain compliance. We were able to negotiate subsequent to putting the staff report together, a extension of that to two hundred and forty days.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
By Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D15. Damage from the storm that occurred on Tuesday, September the eighth, 2015. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation, and I do have some cards on that one.
Recommendation is that staff provide recommendations to address potential stormwater diversion from at-risk areas.
The first card that I have is Angelica Romero.
Good evening. With me, I have an assessment of the water restoration damages for my property, and this is only the water restoration. It doesn't include the furniture, and obviously the time I took for, of work. But this is over twenty-seven thousand dollars in restorations. We have complained in the past regarding storm problems to the city, and nothing has been done. There are two gutters, one that is right in front of my property, and one across the street on Verde Street. Well, the one that is on, on my property, well, on the sidewalk in front of my property, only diverts the water across the street in front of the park, which then leads the water to Hisparia Road, to the main storm drain. And pretty much, it defeats the purpose to have a gutter on Verde Street, since they're not big enough to hold any, what, the amount, amount of water that goes through Verde Street coming from Hisparia and the Hospital Hill. Also, I do have some concerns, because when we called, first off, we, when we called, obviously after hours, the first numbers, the first number that we obtained from the recording was the fire department number. In, in a panic mode, that's the first number that we dialed. Second of all, when the fire department and Public Works showed up, the residents were the ones that were actually removing the debris from the gutters, the gutters in Public Works, or the workers that were there didn't close the road on Verde Street, and cars were still passing by, creating waves of water into my property and my neighbor's property. And that actually create, made it, the problem worse, because the water went into my property, and it ruined all my furniture, beds, couches, and, you know, everything else. So, my question to you is that if there are any funds, since the city didn't declare this as in a state of an emergency, if there are any funds set aside for any monetary assistance?
Thirty seconds.
Okay, and, and also if, how the city's going to prepare for the big storm in two months? Because if this was just a one-day event, you know, we're, how is the city preparing for the storm in November? Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Letizia Diaz.
I have been a homeowner on Verde Street for over thirty-four years, and in those thirty-four years, I have gotten water in my house four times. Tuesday was the fourth time. It is so upsetting, because every time this happens, I get council members come over to my house. "Oh, we're going to do something about this. This is going to be fixed." Nothing ever happens. I don't even bother to call anybody anymore this Tuesday. I am always at the ready with sandbags at my house, because every time it's, they predict on the news it's going to rain, I get the sandbags and I put them at my door, because I always have this problem. Every time I call the fire department, I call the city, "Can you at least come and close the street?" Because, as Angelica said, every time a car comes through, we get a wave of water. There's too much drainage coming from both sides hitting us. Not to, and then when you have this natural disaster, it cannot hold that amount of water. I keep trying to, to get flood damage insurance. It's too costly, because it's a low-lying street. It's considered a flood zone, so it, it makes no, I can't do it. As I said, you know, I, I walked in here, as I was walking in, I saw the sign that said, "Are you storm-ready?" Well, that depends on you all, because, you know, I can do, what I can do is put those sandbags, and that water just came right over. Nobody helps. The firemen department came. They saw that it was, the drain was so clogged with debris, because as it's flowing, it's picking up debris from everywhere. It took a neighbor with a shovel, almost waist-high water, to move that debris, because they refused to do it. They said they couldn't touch it. The city doesn't come out. I told, I, I don't understand, you know. It, it's very frustrating. Having to, money comes out of my pocket. I have to lose wages, because I have to take time off work to clean. Now I'm concerned with my water bill, because there's so much mud. There's, you mop, and you mop, and you mop, and use all this water. It's, something needs to be done. I don't understand. There's a big wash or runoff on, on the park, Center Street Park. Why, I'm not understanding, why can't that be facilitated? Why can't there, that water be diverted over to that?
You have thirty seconds.
I'm sorry?
Thirty seconds.
Okay, so, that's my question. I need help. I can't keep doing this. You may ask, "Why don't you move?" My father had three jobs to earn property. He passed and left that home to me. Again, like I said, thirty-four years I've been living in that house. This is the fourth time. Please, something needs to be done. I can't keep having this. I can't live like this. You all wouldn't live like this. You walk, you go over to that street. Our homes looks like a battle zone with sandbags all over, just to try and protect it again. So, yes, I don't sleep at night, because of this El Nino that's going to come. So, are we storm-ready? That depends on you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the cards that I have.
Madam Mayor, this item was put on by Councilman Negretti mostly because I think several of you had an indication from residents that they were upset about this situation. You know, because of the potential for claims and damages and lawsuits. I know we've all been advised not to comment, and it's frustrating. But rest assured that the staff is reviewing all the information we received tonight, as well as any other information, to see if anything can be done to mitigate this problem in the future, whether that's preemptive with the storms coming, or if there's a better way, perhaps, to, to get notification to the residents as to how to get Public Works assistance if they see that that storm drain has clogged.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a comment. I'd just like to follow that up with a date. When would we have a plan, basically? What you just said. When, when will we hear back on that?
I can't give you a date specific, because we're still evaluating the information, but we do recognize that there's big storms predicted this winter, and we want to make sure that we have whatever information we can put out prior to that happening.
Can this take, not a priority of everything, but at least asterisk as an important item, so that it just doesn't linger for months and come back as soon as possible?
Yeah, that's already occurring. I know the Public Works and Fire Staff are meeting next week to talk about any, you know, potential changes in response. I don't know the exact situation when fire was contacted, but we want to make sure that, that they're easily able to communicate should, in an emergency, fire get the call for something that's more of a Public Works type of matter.
Can we ask for a update in one month?
Absolutely.
Eric?
I was going to recommend putting it back on the agenda for next, next meeting, but.
You know, whatever you think.
It's about three weeks away. We can certainly put it on the agenda and provide whatever information we can at that point in time.
It will be provided telephone numbers and contact numbers, so that if it does occur again, they know who to contact immediately.
Yes.
Our department's always happy to come out and help our residents. In this particular case, last week, we were absolutely inundated with calls, including actual water rescues and trapped victims. We try to respond to as many of these emergencies as possible, and it certainly is one of our missions to protect property, but we always have to put life first. In this case, we did go back into that neighborhood and assisted homeowners after the fact. Next week, we are meeting the Fire Department, Public Works, to discuss pre-planning the Victorville area due to the El Ninos, and finding out where problematic areas are, realizing that we both have different missions. Our mission is life and property, but we don't want to duplicate efforts. Citizens can always go to our fire stations. We hand out sandbags for free. And in the event of an actual flooding, if we don't have to go to rescues, we're happy to stay around and assist our citizens within Victorville. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the cards that I had, and these will be agendized for the next.
Yes.
October sixth.
October the sixth. Thank you. We move on to our public comments. And I do have a card from Dorothy Miller.
Hello, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am very pleased with some things that have happened to us in the last few days. I want to thank the Police Department for coming out and taking care of the situation as much as they could. And I would like to see the roads fixed so we can get through. I can't even get over to the neighbors. I have to walk. I drive as far as I can and walk the rest to get there. And these roads really need so people can get in and out. They're, the other neighbor, she says, "Well, can't they just grade the road one-way?" And the power line road goes through there, and that washes out, and they have to go down and across that and to get out over to Mesa Linda. And she says, "Can't you say something?" I said, "Yes, I'll say something, but I don't know if we get anything done or not." I said, "Yes, I'll say something, but I don't know if we get anything done or not." But we had a bunch of furniture and stuff dumped on our property or next to the property there. And thank goodness for the city, they come out and picked it up, and I talked to Mr. Cox, and he's the one, I think, that pushed for it a little bit, but they got it picked up today.
City manager gets a little better for that.
They got it picked up today, and I'm thrilled to death. And then another thing is this morning at 4:30, I get up and I see headlights. And I, what in the world? And I'm looking out there, and all of a sudden, I see a bunch of red lights. So I don't know if the cop car that had gone over to where we had the problem got stuck out there this morning or what. But it was very shaky to me because I usually don't see car lights coming, and then I see all kinds of red lights. So I don't know if it was a police car or somebody else that got stuck out there. But the roads really, really are so bad now, and they're so deep of trenches, you can't get through. Cars cannot get through there. And that's what the neighbor was saying, the same thing. And I tried to get to her house last night to tell her what had gone on, and couldn't get there, had to go all the way up and around and come back in the other way and go across the power line through the humpsy dumps and got over to her house and at least informed her what was going on out there in our neighborhood. Thank you. And thank the Police Department, and thank you guys.
Thank you, Dorothy.
I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, City Councilmembers. As a concerned resident living one block off of Nusqually, the racetrack, for twenty-three years, two young men died. I heard it. I realized Nusqually went silent. This is not the first time. We've had buses go over there on that street, the other neighbor's house wrecked right there, went right through their house on the corner. You know, it would be nice, back in the day, and it wasn't that long ago, the police used to be out there and would patrol and write tickets. It's a great thing. You love hearing that. You love sitting out on your patio, hearing that going, "Slow your butt down just a little bit." And nothing. I, we have not heard, none of the neighbors, none of us have heard in quite a long time. Police out there, whether it be motorcycle, in their cars, their SUVs, whatever, doing traffic stops for speeding. If you want to drive Nusqually to Third, I mean, on Nusqually from Hesperia to Third, you will be run over if you go forty-five miles an hour. I can guarantee you, by the bus, city vehicles, county vehicles, eighteen-wheelers don't do it though, and cars. And it's a constant thing. And it's just, you know, how many more people have to die? Or what do we do as a neighborhood to go, "Can we please get one, one hour, one day at some point where the police come out and write their tickets, just write everybody up? Nice revenue for the city." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm just gonna read as quickly as I can because I know I'm on Carol Lee's Keeping Tight Time on me. So I'm gonna just read some things that I hammered out last minute today. I know that one of our main concerns is water, you know, or the lack thereof. So I feel distressed by the city continuing to build anything in this city when water shortage is on the, is in our foreseeable future. So continuance of building, I cannot see what he's on. Continuance of building, businesses, residences, schools, whatever, what have you, is, my question is, where's the water gonna come from? A year from now, five years from now, ten years from now? That's a concern. So it seems to me like, and I've said this before, it's not new, the focus seems to be on more, 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 when, to me, in my reality or my perception as a seventeen-year resident, we can't even properly maintain what we already have, and I'm gonna read you a short list of that. Services from the city such as what used to be routine and regular as clockwork would be street sweeping of the residential areas, now you have to do by request, weed abatement of city right-of-way easements, which we now do by request, weeding of the cracks in the asphalt, keeping the red curbs painted, keeping the white street, I'm sorry, the white street lane markers painted, street racing over by me on the long strip of Eucalyptus, which is not only illegal but damaging to the asphalt, illegal possession and use of fireworks inside the city limits, loud parties in residential neighborhoods, street signs imposed which are in deplorable condition due to lack of inspection and proper care. So in my mindset, I can't see moving forward with anything until we already take care of what we have. And that is my whole frustration with the city in general, not people in particular, but in general. Mesa Linda and Eucalyptus just got their four forty-five mile-an-hour speed signs, and today. That might have happened because I took my second trip up here and to the city manager's office yesterday, and I told them, that street's been back there three years. How long do you think it should go? It's a mile-long strip where they're going sixty-plus miles an hour. Should it go without a speed sign? Come on.
You have thirty seconds.
Okay, so, basically, we just have an overwhelmed PD. I placed a call for service non-emergency a month or two ago. Nine, ten, eleven hours later, I'm getting a call back from the sergeant because I was blowing up their dispatch phone lines for a status update. So this isn't everything that I have here, obviously, I'm running out of time. But I did notice on the agenda something about the smoking ban in the city parks. I'm gonna tell you, I'm a smoker. I'm gonna smoke anywhere I want to.
Your time is up.
I don't smoke in front of the city building doors, I don't smoke in front of business stores, but if I'm outside, I don't care if I'm in Victorville City Park or wherever you, and I want to light up, I'm gonna light up. And the reason I can do that, or will do that, is because I can, and you have no enforceable...
I'm sorry, your time is up.
No way to enforce it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Curtis Green is with us as usual, from Supervisor Lovinggood's office, and he tells me that he's accompanied by a representative from Assemblyman Obernolte's office, who unfortunately hasn't filled out a card. But I think we'd like to welcome her and have her come up and say, introduce herself and say something to us.
Certainly.
Can we make that exception?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, for allowing me this opportunity, and I'm very sorry, I forgot to fill out a card. It's my first council meeting, I'm very new to the Assemblyman's office, so I just wanted to say thank you for having me here. I am Amanda Meyer, I'm the new full-time field representative for State Assemblyman Jay Obernolte, and I wanted to thank the council, not only introduce myself, but to thank the council for allowing us, the first Tuesday of every other month, for allowing us to have mobile office hours in your beautiful city hall for our constituents. So I just want to say thank you, introduce myself, and if you ever need anything, please let me know.
Thank you very much. City Manager, do we have anything?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just a couple of somewhat major events. This is actually our busiest month of the year, as we get a little bit closer to some of these smaller events, I'll mention them at the end of the council meetings. But coming up September, Saturday, September 26th, is our annual city employee picnic at Sunset Ridge Park, where we'll have our very popular department versus department softball tournament. I don't remember exactly which department won last year, but I'm sure Chris is probably smiling back there from the Development Department for some reason. We were actually adding a new event for the employees. I was a Cub Scout, so I remember doing this with my dad. We were adding a pine wood derby for our employees, so hopefully we don't get any thumb injuries from shaving down the wood blocks. I know I saw Keith with a couple of blocks, he said one was in case he makes a mistake. So, then he had something that already looked like a car. I don't know if that was legal or not, but seemed like he bought it that way. Anyway, moving on, October 3rd is our annual Fall Festival. It used to be known as the Spice of Life, we've kind of expanded it to be a full Fall Festival. You've probably heard on the radio, it's being advertised very well, we partnered with Eldorado Broadcasters this year. We're expecting literally tens of thousands of people coming to that event. Ton of free activities for the kids, pony rides, everything is free for the kids. So please come out to that, we'll have concerts, we'll have bands, we'll have all sorts of entertainment. That's October 3rd from 10 to 4. And then finally, coming up at the end of October, actually, a couple of major events is our Community Cleanup Day, which you can all sign up to volunteer to help clean up the city. You can contact Community Services for that. And then also, on October 24th, is the Victor Valley Bicycle Tour, which I happen to be a part of the committee for that. So you can ride a bicycle all around Victor Valley. That's all I have.
Thank you. City Councilmembers, do you have anything?
Yeah, one thing, and this is not so important, it seems, as some of the flooding problems we're dealing with right now, but ultimately, it could be every bit as important. Former Mayor and current Councilman Ryan McCracken and I have served on this focus group for the last six, eight months with members of the building industry and staff. We're the only two council members serving. And I think we've had our last meeting with that group, and I'd like to tell you that much was accomplished. Frankly, I don't think much was accomplished, I don't think we do have agreements, generally speaking. And our, I think the way we left it at the last focus group, and Ryan suggested it, and I agreed with him at the time, is that we should send this topic of design standards on future developments back to the Planning Commission and let them make a recommendation. The more I've thought about that, the more I'm not sure that's the best way to approach it. I think the Planning Commission are made up, they are our appointees. I think they want to do what council members would like to see done, but I think they're also motivated by their own thoughts and their own beliefs and their own experience. I think this is fundamentally a policy decision about what design is gonna look like in the future. And this is, I know it's, this discussion started out being a lot-sized discussion, and I think that discussion is behind us. I don't think we're talking about that. We're talking about setbacks between houses, from the street to the front of the house. We're talking about things like porches and whether the, we should emphasize the front of the house, and staff has a, certainly has a preference for doing that. Frankly, I don't live on my front porch, I spend a lot more time in my backyard, so I'm not sure I agree with staff on this issue. The point is, these standards are things that the council is gonna have to address and deal with. I believe the most effective meeting we ever had as a council was a strategic planning meeting we had a year and a half ago when we sat around a table looking at one another, not, you know, looking down the dais, but talking directly to one another about where we want the city to go. And we talked about high-quality, high-value development, and we talked about avoiding low-quality, low-value development. My personal opinion is, most of the problems we face in this city today are the direct result and the indirect result of low-quality, low-value development. I believe that. I do. And it'll probably get me voted out of office, but I believe it. I think the decisions we make about standards for building in the future are vital and critically important, and I don't think we ought to pass this buck over to the Planning Commission. I'd like to see us schedule a workshop discussion to deal with design standards and stay focused on that topic, not strategic planning in any larger sense. It's gotta be public meeting, I mean, I'm not trying to do anything behind closed doors, but in the open, but I'd like to do it around a table instead of on this dais, and I'd like us to look and talk about all the options on design standards and give us an opportunity to at least discuss where we want to go with this. It's a long-winded way of asking for a special meeting on this topic.
I agree a hundred percent.
I agree.
Yeah, we actually, based on the discussion at the focus group meeting, put it on the Planning Commission agenda. It's been forwarded by the Planning Commission with a recommendation to the City Council. So it's coming to you, the issue of setbacks essentially, and wider lot widths. I think that's what you're mostly talking about, more so than the design standards, which have already been through both the Planning Commission and the council process. It's just a terminology difference is all. But that is actually coming to the council in October as it is now. I don't know, I'll defer to the city attorney whether or not that has to come as it currently sits, or if it can be something different than, than what it's coming forward as now, or if knowing that, maybe you want to just bring it to the meeting it's planning on going to.
Well, for any development code changes like this, procedurally, at some point, they have to go to the Planning Commission for a recommendation that then comes to the City Council, which is, I assume that's what's happening at this point.
Yes.
What I think Councilmember Kennedy was looking for was to preempt that and have a discussion prior to it even going to the Planning Commission. That sounds like it's sort of gone to the Planning Commission.
I don't. When we had the meeting with the Planning Commission and the council, it was an open discussion in regard to what this council is trying to accomplish for this community. It got sidetracked, but a former council member indicated that the size of the lot should be ten thousand square feet as a minimum. There were no other council members that endorsed that. But all the council members said, "It is time to talk about our neighborhoods and our standards because we're trying to upgrade the city." We have, excuse me, we have some really small lots, cheaply built, because it's a part of a precise plan. But I know a street which is more than a half-mile from the amenities that were put into that particular plan. If you're going to use that, to say we could build substandard lots and substandard houses, my house is closer to Doris Davis Park than that. I don't think that, if you look at those policies, they've not been established. They've not been established at all. I can show you houses where the setback is from the inside side, inside the sidewalk, the private property side of the sidewalk, and I can show you houses where the right-of-way is ten feet. So, well, we got a twenty-foot setback. No, we don't. And there's never been a policy established on that because it's an easy policy. Easy policy is that the house should be no closer than thirty-foot from the curb go-to sidewalk. There's some easy policies that have not been discussed, they don't need to come from the Planning Commission, we need to discuss those policies on how we want to see this community develop. And then it can go to the planning commission with staff to have the refinements. I know there's some misunderstandings, a planning commissioner recently was struggling with the idea that with our new policy of living into the front yard and requiring the porches in the setting area, and I stopped that individual and said, "That is not a policy of the council." In fact, if you go back and, there are no minutes that I can remember of that joint meeting, council did not agree with that. And yet, there's been no changes in the proposal, and that needs to be changed. I don't, you know, we're not, there's drive-by shootings, for heaven's sakes. We're not gonna be encouraging people to have their kids in the front yard, that's what the backyard is for. We need to discuss those things because there's a huge amount of misunderstandings at this time, and the planning commission that I, commissioners that I'm talking to are struggling because they have staff input, thank you, staff, but they have no input from the council, they don't know what the council is looking for, and I think it's a matter of bringing this to the council. Elected officials, who must answer to all the individuals in this community, can discuss what we believe to be good policies and then forward that to the Planning Commission to put it in an ordinance form and make the recommendations. But we're missing a chunk here. I thought when we had the meeting, that was all gonna come back to the City Council and be a rewording of this proposed ordinance, and all of a sudden, I'm hearing, I'm getting recommendations with the Planning Commission, I haven't seen anything. I believe this council needs to have a special meeting, it does need to wait, need to wait in a period of time. We each have ideas, we need to get this on the table so that staff and the Planning Commission clearly understand what we're trying to accomplish collectively as five City Councilmembers. If I'm wrong, that's fine, I don't mind being wrong, but right now, I can't sit down with anyone and say, "Give me your ideas on what the council policies are," because they don't know what they are because they haven't been expressed. One of the things that really, really frustrates me is that in the past, if individuals could build a fence against the sidewalk and do it on a weekend, City Council wouldn't let staff enforce it. But if you tried to get a permit for it, you were denied. And that caused a neighbor to say, "Why do they have it and I can't have it?" And that caused a neighbor to say, why do they have it and I can't have it? I mean, that's, that's a policy of this council. That, that has to stop and it has to be really clear that that property line starts 10 foot from the curb line. That's where you have to put the fence, the certain height requirements. And we have to start at a point because otherwise, okay, if I can get it done during the weekend and you don't catch me, that means I get away with it? No. That just can't be. And so, you know, does this council want all houses built with an orientation to the front porch where people are supposedly going to sit on their front porch when they come home and work and talk to the neighbors? Come on, let's get realistic. It doesn't happen, it's not going to happen. Most of the people are going to continue in the house or their backyard. We have a whole new emphasis of no more grass and cutting down the grass, desert landscaping. We, we've got to sit down and talk about these issues. And maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm missing something, but I think that this council has to address it, establish the policies, not write the ordinances, refer it to the staff and the planning commission, and let them put it in the order that's workable and enforceable and bring it back to the council for final adoption.
Well, I didn't know that was agendized tonight, but apparently we had a vote on something regarding setbacks and lot sizes and whatnot. I'm going to defer, no, 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 I, that's what you asked for. What occurred in the last 10 minutes is completely something different. I'm going to just defer to our city attorney because number one, this wasn't agendized. Number two, there's a legal process by which this has to occur. It has to come through the planning commission. And number three, if we don't believe in our own planning commission, then why do we have them? But regardless of that, I'm going to let that go. Doug, I'm going to suggest that we no longer council, council meetings in the summer. I don't, you know, obviously, there might have been some good thought behind that, but the reality is, the public expects us to be here. They expect us to be making decisions and press the council, council meetings just no longer make sense. I would like to get some sort of an update from either you, Mr. Kennedy, or you, Mr. Cox, or even from Ms. Robertson, on what is going on with the BVWRA pipeline in Old Town. This thing has been going on for way too long. And I'm sick of it. I want it finished. I want to know when it's going to be finished and I want to know why it's taking them so damn long. And then finally to Sam, someone's going to get killed on Mojave Drive between Amargosa and the freeway, but more specifically near, there's two strip shopping centers there. There's Amali's on one side, Little Caesar's and gas stations on the other side. People just cross there, they don't even care. They're going to get hit, they're going to get killed. I don't know what we can do to stop it, but we need to do something before someone gets killed. Because I, I don't, I, apparently, they don't care about their own lives, but I do. I drive that on a regular basis and it, it just frustrates me to see people just crossing the road there on a rate, without any concern. It also happens at Bear Valley Road between Second and what ultimately would be, I think, First, right there at Desert Valley Hospital and Hesperia on the other side. People just cross from the hospital over to the strip shopping center to go eat, go shop, buy something, and they go back over. They must be in ER urgent care waiting. I don't know. There's a crosswalk, there's a light right there. These are two places that are prevalently known for people to jaywalk. And they're taking their lives into their own hands. I wish I didn't have to ask you to do something about it, but unfortunately, no one cares. They just continue to do it. So I'm asking that we at least try to do something about it. That's all I have.
I'd like to welcome, I'd welcome any chance to sit down and talk about priorities for the city. That has not happened since I've come onto the city council, and it's something I very much look forward to doing from day one. No one's asked me what my priorities are. All right? Now, my priorities right now are dealing with this stormwater and what's going to happen when El Nino hits the city and having a plan that we can communicate. That's the number one priority. Other priorities are escape park and other things, but do I get anything about that? No. I get setbacks, rear-facing garages and porches. I would call those lower-level priority items. So, yeah, I would welcome a conversation about priorities because I'm not sure where all this is coming from, but we have some serious issues here. Half the city appears to be without sidewalks or drainage. There are some intersections that I lived next to in the past where four roads drain into one intersection. And you know what? There is no plan. If you live there, you know you need to go around. There is no plan. But rear-facing garages, well, we spent a lot of time talking about that. So I, I welcome a conversation about what the priorities are for this city council so that the city staff can execute that. Because it hasn't happened. I, I'll just say that, number one. And when it comes to setbacks, let me just tell you right now, that's a default way of saying increasing lot sizes. That, that, that conversation, I am more than willing to have and happy to talk about that. Next, what I'm looking forward to is getting a quick reaction force or some sort of plan to deal with the stormwater issues that we're going to be facing. Again, there are areas that we know there's just nothing we can do about. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about areas we know what we can do something about. Doing nothing is not what I'm looking for here. So in October 6th, I hope we have something to really talk about. Also, on October 6th, I'd like to see a skate park project timeline. A skate park project timeline. If a project like that was going to occur, I'd like to see how long it would take and basically what, what would you do? And then I'd like to make a motion for the city council to approve it or not. If the council doesn't want to approve skate park, no problem. I won't bring it up. But that's what I'm looking forward to on October 6th. Stormwater conversations, skate park plan. And the last one I'd like to see also is a layout of the city office, built, the city hall's office space. I want to see vacancies. I want to see possibly places that people can be relocated to or that we can have an office because I'm getting tired of coming in here on the weekend and we all share one office. I don't know if people know that. We share one office and on the weekends, I can't even turn on the lights. So I'm wandering around city hall in the dark on the weekends. So I just don't think that that's appropriate. So I'd just like to see what's available, see if it's feasible to move city councilmen and women into a office, relocate people if necessary, because I know we have vacancies. And again, if the city council, I'll make a motion to approve it, move forward. If not, again, I won't bring it up. But that's what I'm looking forward in October 6th.
Anything else? Yeah, well, that is very important, yeah. I feel that we need to discuss a lot of things before we come to the meetings. So hopefully, we can get started on having some special sessions and workshops and open agreement. But we do have to go back into our closed session.
That is correct. And we convene a closed session to the extent there's reportable action, we will come out and do that, the conclusion.
Certainly. Okay. So this meeting is adjourned.
The closed session meeting of the Victorville City Council concluded at 8:42 PM and there was no reportable action. The meeting stands adjourned.